Dr. Cordelina?
Here.
Senator Dontrich?
I'm here.
Mrs. Santa? Dr. Wegrans? Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman? Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here. Flash a little, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Hall was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education and Ministry of Office Buildings, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on June 23, 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Blunt. We don't have any high school representatives tonight. They'll be joining us in September. Remarks, Superintendent, Dr. Rogers.
I will turn things over to Charlene Peterson, who is our field services representative from the New Jersey School Board. She's going to provide an overview of the search process.
Do you have a microphone there, Charlie?
I do. Thank you. Yeah, isn't that great? I just want to thank you for the opportunity here to talk about the superintendent's search process. I'm just going to go through an overview of the steps that the board would be undertaking going through this important process. You know, we always tell boards that this is the single most important thing that a board ever does is the hiring of a superintendent, just because of the, you know, large impacts that it has. So saying that, you know, we talked about the fact that it is the board's responsibility and that as we think about the board's oversight role in a district, that the board basically just hires that one person, the superintendent, and then all of the other district staff report to the superintendent. So recognizing then the importance of this process, you know, we make sure then that we do it, you know, following New Jersey School Board's longstanding process, and then also make sure that we talk to your staff, talk to your community, talk to your district stakeholders to find out what is important specifically for Montville Township, success in a superintendent. So I'm going to take you through the process. So we'll start out what the legal requirements are to be a superintendent. So it's required that someone has to possess a school administrator's certificate, so they have to hold that from the state of New Jersey. If someone were to apply or be considered who lived outside of New Jersey, it's required then that they would have to move in the state within a year. A superintendent, kind of their tenure in your district is their contract. So the minimum contract that a board can offer a superintendent is three years, and the maximum contract a board can offer a superintendent is five years. Now, the contract years are based on the contract ending on June 30th, so if you were to find yourself in a situation, you know, that you were hiring someone, say, in the middle of that, then it would be like half years. So it would have to be three and a half years, and, you know, the maximum being four and a half years. That's kind of another set of eyes to look at your contract. The state requires that before the board can approve it, you need to send it to the county superintendent, so they are kind of like the, you know, the eyes of the state here at the local level to approve the contract first. Once you get the okay from the county superintendent, then the board can approve it. And in terms of compensation requirements, now that the salary caps were lifted a few years ago, kind of the guidance that the state has given us is that compensation is subject to comparability requirements. And I will explain, I think, to the next slide what that is. Essentially, in terms of the base salary, the state identifies comparability requirements as looking at a similarly credentialed and experienced administrators in the region in other districts that have similar enrollment, achievement challenges, and grade spans. So recognizing then, again, that when the board would submit the contract to the county superintendent, you would have to kind of also give the data and the evidence that the salary that you have included in the contract goes along with the needs parameters. While the state did deploy the salary cap, they did not take away the ability to also include miracles for superintendents, which was imposed when the salary caps were in place. But one of the things we are finding is that most of the newer contracts we've seen do not include miracles any longer, just because they were never pensionable. So if the option exists, typically people would prefer that the money be put in the salary as opposed to miracles. So we are seeing fewer and fewer of those included in contracts. So as we, you know, we talked about the fact that this is the single most important task that a board undertakes, and just want to kind of emphasize the fact that the board is the one that is legally tasked with hiring the superintendent. But, you know, we recognize then that if the board has to do it, the board has to know what's important to the staff. They have to know what's important to the community, what's important to the students, recognizing that each group, you know, works with the superintendent differently. So in order for the board to be able to select the right person, the board needs to know what's important to the other groups. So throughout the search process, we will be getting, gathering input, both by having in-person sessions similar to this. There will also be a survey for those people that can't attend the input session, you know, and we'll make sure that it's, and we'll go through and do a similar explanation of this and what the process is, so that everyone understands the process, and then also important that we receive input. So the board will not even be able to look at the applications until they have seen or understand the input from the other stakeholders, so that when the board does look at the applications, you're looking into the lens of not only what's important to you as the board, but also what's important to all of the other stakeholders, to make sure then that you're taking those things into consideration in order to find the best fit or the best person for Montville Township. This is a sample of what the search calendar could look like, you know, recognizing that we said we shouldn't let the calendar drive the process, that we need to make sure that we are finding the perfect person. So as much as we have a calendar here that we will try and follow, we have to recognize that we're not going to let that drive us, finding the right person is what's going to drive the process. So it starts with a session like tonight of having this, you know, initial meeting, advertising the search, getting input, the advertises, and then it's usually open for about a month. So I guess that's also part of this too, is that, you know, as much as we think about the search process, that there's a lot of it that is outside of the control of really any of us, that, you know, that, like you said, there's the 30 days upfront for the advertisement, and then at the back, the person you're hiring is coming from another district and has a notification clause in their contract of what they need to tell the district that they're leaving from. So most of them are 60 to 90 days. So those things are already built into the search without us essentially doing anything, so we recognize then that we're working within those parameters, and the parts that we can pretty much control are the timing of the interviews. Here is a sample of an ad, so this isn't going to be the board's final ad. It is here just to kind of demonstrate a point, and the point being that when you do see the final ad, we'll recognize in the qualifications that there are some things that can be listed as required and some things that can be listed as preferred. So when something is listed as required, it means that the person has to have it, and that the board cannot consider them, the board cannot interview them, if they don't have a required qualification. Now, the state has already required that the person has to have a school administrator's certificate, so that, you know, is always there. Like in this case, in this example that I'm showing, this board said, okay, we're also going to require that you have to have some administrative experience. In this example, it was three years. So again, that's a way to kind of help make sure then that we are kind of narrowing down our pool and saying, we think it's so important that someone has had some experience in this area in order to successfully lead the district. So these are things when your final, when your ad is finalized, things to, you know, for you to look at. Qualifications that are preferred means that if you have it and I don't, you are a better fit for the criteria than I am, but it doesn't preclude me from being considered. So it's kind of a way of how we are casting a net in terms of looking for applicants. The more things that we would make required would say upfront then that we're kind of narrowing the net or narrowing the applicant pool, as opposed to more things that are preferred, saying, well, just get people in the door, and then perhaps we can narrow the pool downs from there. So those are the types of things then that we would be taking into consideration in putting the ad together. So the, so now, once we have our ad, what happens with it? How is your search advertised? So the New Jersey School Boards has some options just because of how, you know, long we've been doing searches, and the number of searches we do, that our website has become kind of the place to go in terms of if you were a superintendent or someone looking for a superintendent's job, that's where you would know to go. We also work with the other professional organizations, like the superintendent's organization, the business administrators' organization. We have a database of about 850 people who have previously applied for searches, so we make sure that all of them see your advertisement. We work with the nearby colleges and county offices, and we also partner with the Ohio School Board Association, and they have an online superintendent application system, and there are 10 other states as part of that. So as much as we would not intentionally be making your search a national search, anyone in those 10 states on the system has the ability to see and respond to your ads. In addition to this free advertising, the board also has the option, if it would like, to pay for advertising, to have the ad appear in the Sunday Star-Ledger, and also the online options that go along with that, recognizing that education is one of the few industries that newspaper advertising for jobs is still pretty much the standard. So one of the things that New Jersey School Boards does is make sure that the board has all of the information on each of the, every person that applies for the job, recognizing that, you know, if we were just to ask for a resume or a cover letter, recognize that we may get, you know, some people have a one-page resume, some people have a four-page resume, so we want to make sure then that we have everyone fill out an application, so that we have the same information from everyone. And then the board also has the option to customize and select three questions that they would like every single person to answer, so that they have that information. So then, in addition to the application, the resume, the cover letter, we ask for that certificate that's required, we ask for the last performance evaluation, we ask for references, and we also ask for their transcripts beyond a master's level, because a master's level is required as part of getting a certificate, so anything that they have done beyond that. So again, you know, we need to stress the importance of confidentiality throughout this whole process. So, you know, that's what, you know, the board is the only group that's legally charged with confidentiality, so we need to make sure then, in order for us to attract the best candidates, that it has to be clear that confidentiality is paramount in this process, to make sure then that we are attracting the best people. So then, now that we have all of these applications and have all of this, this information, what will happen? So, you know, it is an online application portal now that the board will be able to log into and access and read all of this information. So like I said, we'll read it through the lens of, you know, what's important to all of the stakeholders, based on the input sessions in the surveys. You know, we'll look at, you know, how well did people match the qualifications that were in the ad, and then we'll put all of that together, and we'll develop some criteria then, based on all the information that we've received, and then we would review the applicants against that criteria, again, recognizing that if someone had some, did not possess a qualification that we said was required, we would not be able to consider them. So in that, you know, in that meeting that I would sit down with the board to go through all the, all the applicants and have that discussion, the goal of that would be, as we're looking at the criteria and the candidates, to identify candidates that the board would be interested in bringing in for a first-round interview. So typically, a search is three interview rounds. The first interview round is, you know, these are just general numbers, I'm saying that we usually would bring in about eight to 10 people, and this is a very structured interview. We want to make sure that everyone is treated exactly the same way. So like typically, you would ask question one, you would ask question two, you know, in that first round, to make sure that if I rise to the top, that I have done so because I had the same opportunity as everyone else, and because I was a better fit, was able to move forward. So we make sure then that that first round is structured, just wanting to find out, are you a good fit? Are you someone we could see ourselves moving forward with, or that I want to learn more about? The next round then, the second round, is really where the board does its digging. We typically would cut that pool in half, so say, four to five. This round is then longer, and you can also, it's less structured, so there may be things that you would ask me as a candidate that you might not ask someone else because of what you saw on my resume. Say, I had a lot of K-8 experience, but I didn't have a lot of high school experience. You might want to ask me questions about the high school that you might not need to ask someone else. So this round allows you to designate some questions you may want to ask of everyone, but some questions you may just want to, you know, specifically for certain candidates, and you can also have more of a back and forth. So if you ask a question and it triggers something in your mind that you'd like to know more about, you can kind of have that back and forth, and even have the opportunity to get to know the candidate a little bit. You know, I had one where I asked them what they were reading, just to kind of have a sense a little bit, you know, about the person. So by the end of the second round then, we should be able to be kind of thinking, can we see this person as our superintendent? Have they shown us enough? Have they demonstrated that they have what we're looking for in terms of being able to lead our district? And then ideally, if the process, you know, moves along the way it should, we will have then now identified two, maybe three peoples that, you know, that we, that we can say, yes, we'd like to or could consider them being our superintendent. And then usually in that finalist round, rather than asking kind of back and forth questions again, we usually give them a scenario of something that's actually going on in your district, give it to them about a week or so ahead of time, let them prepare, and see how they come back and do the presentations to the board, see how they analyze data, whatever you're asking of them, what their communication style is. The board could opt to ask for a writing sample at this point. So this is where we're really trying to get down to that one person who we would consider to be our finalist. So I'm not going to call them your superintendent yet, I'm going to call them your finalist, because then now we want to then start doing kind of our vetting. So we have now maintained the confidentiality of all of the applicants up until this point. So when we have the one finalist then, then I would call them, say, this is where you are in the process, you need to tell whoever you need to tell. If it's, you know, if you're a superintendent, tell your board members, tell your staff, whoever is now, you know, we're going to be moving forward with just you, and the board's going to check in references. So one of the things that is in New Jersey School Board's application system is a box that every, every applicant has to check, that says the board can call whoever they want for references. So as much as you have provided us as the candidate with references, recognize then that you have the ability to go beyond that, and would always suggest that you, you know, look at the website of wherever they're coming from and like see who the PTA president is, see who the association president, the Ed Foundation, kind of look at different groups that you might be interested in talking to that would be beyond the references that the person has provided. So assuming then that that all goes well, you can bring the person in here to spend a day in the district. That's something that we, you know, definitely recommend you do. It allows all of the other stakeholders to kind of lay eyes on the person and just kind of get a sense of who they are. And then assuming that all goes well, then we would start contract negotiations. Again, you know, because of the restrictions from the state, there really is not a lot to negotiate, other than the salary, the length of the contract, you know, just a few other things, but for the most part, not a lot. And then once that contract has been negotiated, it goes to the county superintendent, upon approval from the county superintendent, the board can have to, the appointment on their agenda then for approval. So, you know, that would be kind of like I said, just the processes the board would go through, and then in terms of, just wanted to show you the questions or the input then that we ask from the staff and community. So these are typically the, the input questions that we'll be looking for. So asking the staff and the community, what are the strengths of the, like, the township and the community? Now, recognizing that as much as, you know, the candidates have to sell themselves to us, we also have to sell ourselves to them and help people understand why this is a good place to live, why this is a good place to work. What would be helpful for the new superintendent to know about Montville Township? Every town, every township is unique. If I don't live here, help me get here. Help me understand what's important to you, what, what makes you different, so that if I'm the new, you know, if I'm the new superintendent, I now can kind of better understand kind of the culture and climate of your community. We also want to know what are things you think are going to require your attention, so that we make sure then that we're hiring someone that has the skills to undertake things that are going to require focus and attention. Then we'll ask about background and training. Should they have been a teacher? Should they have been a principal? Should they have been a superintendent before? What are things that are important to you? And then we'll also find out about their leadership skills. What kind of leadership skills? Should they be visible? Should they be approachable? Should they be innovative? What are things that are important to you about this person? All together, you know, trying to develop some kind of a profile of the right person for Montville Township, and then also ask if you had the ability to sit at the table, what would be a question that you would ask? So this is all input then that we would be gathering from the staff, the community, and the students to make available to the board. So that was all that I have about the process. Did anyone from the board have any questions, Charlene?
Thank you very much, Charlene. We will open any questions from board members at the present time. Some will listen through several times in the report as well as we like. I will now open it if any member of the public has a specific question for Charlene.
Recognizing that I will be back to do this for the public and will, you know, be addressing questions.
I would, I would encourage you, when Charlene has these meetings regarding, just sit down, sir, please. Sit down. You can sit down. When Charlene has these meetings with the public and staff and the students, then please make every effort to attend, to get your input, so we can use that input in our selection process. Are there any questions, sir? Do you have a question? Okay, you want to answer it, please? You can answer it. Can I take my?
Speak up, speak up. Your name, please? Dr. Peter Walsh-Tolaco. Question, this is a very good presentation, a quick question. You just said we're looking for the best candidates. If I read it correctly, exceptional leadership skills. I ask that we start the process in the spring, for a couple of reasons. This seems rushed. We have an assistant superintendent, Mr. Short, correct? If we do this now, if it feels rushed, we're either going to get somebody, again, looking for the best candidates, we're either going to get somebody who currently is not a super for whatever reason, or we're going to hire somebody away from another district. To me, someone leaving another district midstream is not leadership skills.
Right.
If we're looking for the next leader of Montville, I suggest we wait and do a thorough process, and actually get everybody who is possibly current superintendent to apply, and not put them in a tough position as their current, or future leader, to leave their current district midstream and start off on a bad foot. Thank you very much.
Your name, please?
Hey, Trina, Uofc River Road. My comments are essentially the same as Mr. Walsh previously, so I just want to reinforce what he has said. But I would also like to ask if the team or the board has considered or would consider forming a parent committee to have input, as that's allowed by the board's policies. That's something I know that a lot of parents, as you have said, you know, this is the single most important task we've had, I think the most input we can get from community and parents specifically is the better. So I was just wondering about something the board had considered as part of the process.
We, this, as Charlene has mentioned, this is the most important thing that the Board of Education does. It's the only position that they can hire. Superintendent recommends every other candidate. We have, I don't know of any district around that has a search committee, I'm sure there's some, for the superintendent. We have decided between meetings that Charlene is going to have with the staff and the citizens, taking that input, and then using that to meet with the Board of Education, and then we will make the selection process. I think the word confidentiality is very important here, more than any, because once you have committees and everything else involved, names get out, okay? And that, we can't allow that, and the school boards can't allow that. So yes, we, we've gotten a request, however, we felt it is best to leave it with the domain of the Board of Education to do this process. Thank you.
I don't need it, thank you. My name is Lauren Taylor. I live in San Francisco, New Jersey.
Mr. President? Yes? Mr. President? Person doesn't have a mask on.
So I have no problem wearing a mask.
Ma'am.
So.
Mr., excuse me, excuse me.
No, I asked.
With the meetings going so well, why, why can't you just put a mask on?
I am happy to do so, actually, under the Emergency Act, because you are a school board, you're governed under OSHA. Under the OSHA requirements, if you require a mask, you have to provide it. If you provide me with a mask, I'd be happy to put one on.
Why don't you just provide it?
Does anybody have a mask? I'm happy to put one on.
Let the office get a review from the, from the meeting, please.
I'm sorry, under.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, give her a mask. Just give her a mask. Give her a mask.
You're disrupting the whole meeting.
Just give her a mask. Why can't you just give her a mask?
Here's a mask. Here's a mask. You may put a mask on if you'd like to talk. Anybody else has, does not have a mask? Get one, or please leave the meeting. Let me use the microphone, ma'am.
Under the New Jersey Open Public Meeting OSHA requirement, if you are asking anybody in attendance, then you must perform and offer the mask. That's number one. Number two, you yourself, Mr. Brown, just indicated that hiring a superintendent is the single most important task of our school board. Does anybody here agree with that?
Yes.
Do you have a question on the, do you have a question on the process that Charlene went through?
I do. The question is that you had a complete slide deck on the thought process surrounding this single most important task of the school board's, I'm sorry, should be my children, their children. I'm sorry, should be my children, their children.
Ma'am, don't yell at the consultant, please.
I'm not yelling at anybody. I am frustrated. I am frustrated that we, the people, no longer have a voice and you think your requirements, your mandates, and your board's positions will outtrump my civil liberties and my freedom of speech.
No one's ever said that, ma'am.
Number one, I would like to ask, why is Montville a good place to live? Why do I and what is most important in the culture and the climate of this community? And that is unity. It is unity and the parents sticking together and understanding the important values of what this country is based on. It is understanding that there is not one person. And please, correct me if I am wrong, is anybody on this board a medical practitioner or a scientist? And please state your credentials for the record.
Please get to the question, then. Charlene, you'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to make other suggestions.
Absolutely. I was very impressed with your slide set. I was very impressed with the list of questions that you asked as the single most important task of this board. And I would like to ask you, where is your slide set on the data about masks? Where is this slide deck on your comments about why you think it is not complicit to act against our children and having them wear masks?
Please.
Where is the data about a type of...
Taylor, you'll have, Mrs. Taylor, you'll have a spot at the end of the meeting. We're staying on the superintendent's search right now. Please bear with us. Please bear with us, okay? We're trying to be nice and you're ever want a shot. If you have a question like the other gentleman had on the superintendent's search, please ask it. At the end of the meeting, you'll have an opportunity to make other suggestions, okay?
I rest my entire comments on this. My question is, why are you making things that are not important more important than the life and the safety of my child?
Nobody ever said that. You're saying that, and no one on this board said it. I said that the superintendent is the only person that the school board can hire. Every other person is recommended by the superintendent, okay?
And I quote, "The single most important task..."
In a personnel item, yes. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charlene, thank you very much. We will keep it updated. We now like to return to the agenda, please. Committee reports, Section G. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
I do, Charlene.
Finance?
So prior to the meeting, the finance committee met. We went over summary of improvements, exterior improvements right here at the high school, which I hope everybody noticed as they came in this evening. We also discussed rendering for our middle school for improvements of the exterior at S School, as well as improvements to the exterior of the three sister schools and that would be William Mason, Cedar Hill, and Woodmont. The Valley View and Phil Dale will also have their turn as, I believe, next year. We spent quite a bit of time speaking about the water damage at Cedar Hill. We drew the, that came through the roof, as well as the status of remediation and restoration. And that really took up the bulk of the time in the finance committee.
Thank you. Curriculum and instruction, Mr. Modrak is not here. I think there's a meeting another week or two.
Next week.
Policy and personnel, not here. I don't think they're reading. Communications, the chairman's not here. I don't think they've met. Safety and security, Mike Rappaport?
No report needed.
Any delegates?
Charlie, I did attend a meeting of the county association leadership. It was the county association leadership meeting that happens several times a year. This was a hybrid meeting with people in person as well as people using Zoom. The topic was dealing with difficult and controversial issues at the Board of Education. It was a very timely meeting. I did as well attend it.
Thank you. Any other delegates? PGCs, any PGCs? I don't think they've met. Negotiations, the teachers' parent?
Nothing new to report at this time.
Sorry?
Nothing new to report at this time.
Okay. CMTA and MTSIAA hopefully will be approving all of the units in September. Local participation, it's an opportunity for anyone to ask any questions on the agenda items. If you have questions, if I'm not on the agenda, you'll be given an opportunity at the conclusion of the agenda items to be heard. Any questions? I had entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Go.
Item one, I have the minutes. I'll go through these. If you have any questions, speak up. Section J, this. Section K? Section L, personnel? And section M? A lot of personnel's been ready for next year.
Charlie, the only comment I would make on section M, so I'd like to thank...
Which one?
The only comment I have to make about section M, M1 in particular, is that whole day approval is, I'd like to thank Dr. Ruth Carr for her attention to providing professional development to so many of our staff through lifeline, pre-prevention and post-vention, as well as intervention training. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Section M2? Section N, the policies? You will notice on one of the personnel items that the superintendent has told there's an official retirement, and I'm sure we'll have more as soon as we get closer to December. Roll call, roll, Mrs. Schluss?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Before we move on, I would like to, things got a little heated at the beginning of the meeting. I would like to welcome you all to the Board of Education, like I do with every meeting. And it's nice to see so many of you out here this evening. And I'm glad we were able to get the mask situation straight in the way. I might be leaving the meeting a little early and it's not because I want to, I had surgery, and I'm really hurting up here, guys, so I'm going to hang out as long as I can and then Mr. Palmer will take over. Before we do that, any old business of the Board of Education? Any general board comments and new business? Public participation, this is an opportunity for anyone to speak. Please argue anything that was not on the agenda. I see quite a few people there. We might only get through this. If you have more than one question, please give someone else an opportunity. All right, I would help the meeting. Please identify who you are and your address, please. Use the mic, please.
Lee Locumoden, 114 Waha Road. I just want to say, Mr. McManus retired. Dr. Ruth Carr, we will miss you too. I just want to say on the record, what a wonderful man. We will miss him. So just kudos to Mr. McManus.
All right, Kate Trina, East River Road. When I speak, I believe on behalf of many people who are here, when I say we are frustrated and disappointed with the management of our schools over the last year. We can all acknowledge that in the beginning, drastic decisions needed to be made without much knowledge. But now seventeen months in, we know. We know that children have a risk of dying from COVID that is statistically zero. We know that they are not the drivers in spreading COVID. And even with the introduction of the Delta variant, while children's heat rates may be rising, we know their hospitalization and death rates are not. To bring it a little closer to home, according to the New Jersey Department of Health, in Montville specifically, there have been thirty-one COVID deaths. Twenty-two of these were individuals eighty years old and over. The number of deaths under thirty years old is zero. Again, under thirty years old is zero deaths in Montville. There is no reason, no justification to continue sacrificing our children's health and well-being for a virus that poses them virtually no risk, regardless of whatever unconstitutional, unethical mandate the governor cuts out. You, this board, is responsible for what happens in this district. You are responsible for the mental health issues, the nosebleeds, the headaches, nausea, fatigue, that our children are experiencing as a result of these masks in schools. We are frustrated and disappointed because this board, time and time again, has failed to stand up for our children and to listen to the voice of their community. At least ten other districts in New Jersey have stood up to the governor's mandate. I implore you, stand up and defy this unnecessary and harmful mandate. Do the right thing and not just what you are told. Do what is best for our children or step down.
Hi, I'm Sheri. I'm from Mount. I'm actually an alumni of Montville. So I'm glad to be back to raise my son. And thank you so much to the board for your dedication and your support and everything during this crazy time. And I appreciate having a full-time return as basically it's been recommended by the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, who are really the ones who are the experts in all of this. And it is also in support by Governor Murphy. And I'm proud that he's doing that. Everyone's entitled to their opinion, so I'm just giving my opinion. And as a parent and an alumni, I'm very concerned about the taking off of mask during snack and lunch during this extremely transmissible Delta variant coming along. This is my concern. And I just want to bring it up because I don't know the details yet. So I just want to put my opinion here. And it's the voice of other parents that I've been speaking to that are afraid to come in in person because they want masking and they don't want to come and hear in person. They're more comfortable doing it virtually. So the voice that you're not hearing is the voice of people that are afraid for their lives of their children. And there's many voices that you're not hearing. They're just not here tonight. They wait to see it on the internet afterwards for their personal safety or they can't get here for personal reasons. So as we know, elementary children are not vaccinated, which makes them all high risk, according to some doctors from Mount Sinai in New York City that I'm speaking to for reasons. And this particular doctor was just out of National Convention down in Florida, which all of us just had a rose. And what's going down the pipe there is heading up this way. And it's been told...
Please show respect to the speaker.
Absolutely not.
As it's happening in Texas. So whatever you see going down there, it's already here. The Delta's here. Whoever's getting COVID, it's part of it. I'm talking, thank you very much.
Please show proper respect.
Thank you very much. And in addition to being able to catch Delta under one minute, if you're less than six feet away outside, if both parties are unmasked, even if you're vaccinated, because there's breakthrough cases. And that's why we're waiting for boosters. They're not here yet, but they're coming soon, according to Biden. They're coming.
Just like Kabul.
They're not gonna stay, blow it off.
All right, that's a separate issue. We'll call that out now and stand out of here. Okay, I'd love to call that. But, um, I'm sure you know that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so my name is Sarahx Munch. And what I'm proposing, outdoor snack and lunch. We can find a way to do outdoor snack and lunch from September to November when the weather's warm. I know other school districts that are planning to do this in New Jersey. And I, that's my name. If we can find a way to get the kids outside as much as possible and give them recess, that's very important for their emotional well-being. Being in person is very important for the kids' emotional well-being. So I really want the in-person and I want the kids to be outside as much as they can. So if we could find a way to fundraise for picnic tables, find ways, gift blankets or cars, just finding a way for the kids to be outside as much as possible for them to come out and enjoy the world they have seen and we're going to do it outside. And let them have recess so they can play the kids and be social. And that's what they miss down on to the Palisade here and being home. That's my point. Okay, Kate Trina? Can you speak directly into the mic?
Since I have some experience working with...
Pfizer.
I suggest that you return the meeting. If these forty is not polite to speak, whatever they're saying, all speakers, I would suggest...
I appreciate your point of view. I will say this, I do not want to adjourn the meeting. I want to give everybody a chance to speak. I also want everybody to show respect to each other. You know what, people, we're all from the same community. We all want what's best for the kids. People have different ideas as to how to do that. So let's respect everybody's opinion. Nobody's a villain here. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for listening. So, I guess you guys have all six feet apart and all that stuff.
Can you please identify yourself?
Yes, you can. Sure, I am. I am a man called name Rafael. Here.
Sir, sir.
My address is not relevant to you. I'm not a public person. You are. Just a...
Sir, excuse me.
I live in this town. I live in this town. You don't need my address. But my address you can find publicly. I'm sure you can. Just take my picture, go some digging, check for admission, other things. I have no problem with it. All right? So I stand here to speak for these fine man and woman just to talk about a bunch of things. Taking forward to not trespass or do any harm to any man or woman in this room. Do we understand? I take it as yes. Therefore, I claim every man and woman is born free and every man and woman is equal under the supreme law of this land. There are disturbing school actions that move me before you and I, as a man, want to discuss that. I recognize true from false very well. Therefore, I demand you to show the proof of science study approved by one single peer that masks work and protect against COVID-19 so-called or any viruses for that matter. I will also demand one more thing. Proof of so-called COVID-19 or its variants, isolation of it, to even discuss any form of existence of it. Unfortunately, it's proven over time and over and over, excuse me, that PCR tests can distinguish separation between flu, countercalled or so-called by mass media COVID-19. Therefore, forcing any man, woman, and children against their will to wear masks, take any therapeutics or vaccines or injections as example for, as example, is unlawful and called child abuse. As a reminder from a history not that far... As a reminder from a history, not that far history, people were held accountable for experiments on humans, which took place during the Nuremberg Trials, as we know it, some of us at least. Trials included and sentenced men and women of military, health professionals, educational personnel, media as a tier, not only military. That info is there. If you don't know it or you don't want to know it, that's your choice. You can dig for it. You'll find it. And it's public. For that very reason, Nuremberg Covid were set to no man or woman or their property
Sir, 60 seconds, okay, sir.
without casting becomes elaborate in the future. Now, as a man, ask, do you or any woman and men in this room take a claim that I'm their property? Therefore, you have no authority or jurisdiction over me. Sure, I mean, yeah, if you cut my mic off, that's fine. There will be something that you do. I don't. I have a little bit more. I have about two minutes of reading. That's all.
All right, 30 seconds.
Give him two minutes. We're all voting for it. Take it out, Mike.
Now, I want to ask you one more thing. Is there a man or woman of this institution, of head of this institution, that claim that I'm their property?
Sir, I'm gonna have to spend four minutes now, please. I said three to four. Thank you. I'm trying to limit the amount of time you're... Sir, give everyone a chance to speak.
It's five minutes by board policy unless you vote otherwise.
I do respect you, all of you, as a humans, as a man and a woman.
I expect you to... It's time to step down.
Be sure, I'll send my child to a school with no mask. And he doesn't have to tell you the found records of health.
Thank you, sir.
All right? Now, what would...
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
I understand that my time is up and your time.
Sir, your time is up.
My time is different. What do you think, what do you think is gonna happen if you deny my son to public school? Because I pay taxes, which is land and property taxes. Everyone pays for it, public gas, to get benefits, to get public benefits.
Now, it's gonna stop down for going to Germany.
Sure. I am respectful.
I'm giving my time.
I'm giving my time. You can have my time, too.
If you want to cut my time off, I'm just gonna say something very important to the rest of these fine men and women. What do you think is gonna happen when they find out they can actually reassess their taxes from land and residential to land and private and pay for what they want to pay? What do you think is gonna happen? I'm just saying, because if you deny a public access to the school for a child that's in this district, you're basically breaching the contract. Thank you.
In order to give the maximum number of people a chance to speak, and I won't tell anybody they can't be heard, I'm going to limit the amount of time to two minutes.
Don't you have to vote on that by a board?
Don't you have to vote on that?
No, we don't.
It's on your policy.
No, according to the board, according to your Bible laws, it says that if you guys were to adjust it, it has to get approved by the board and not just the board president.
Okay, madam, if the board doesn't object, the board president has the authority. We've been through this before.
We're gonna move there. One second. So who? So, Mr. Bryan?
Let's go from...
Dr. Corleena? Dr. Ford?
See?
Not a yes. People, not think this to be mean. I'm trying to give everyone a chance to be heard rather than saying...
I know, but these are important things and it takes more than two minutes.
Please, you don't have a picture.
My name's Rhonda Gershonoff, and I'm on Two Woodside Drive. I'm coming up here first in response to the woman in the back. I am currently under instruction from the Infectious Disease Department of New York for a while. I had COVID and almost died back in January.
Please direct your question.
The Infectious Disease Department there has told me that this mask does not help me. These are top doctors telling me that the mask is not the reason that I did or didn't get it. They also told me through these trials and tribulations and blood tests and stuff that my antibodies are so high that my children did not get COVID and they laid all on top of me. They told me that pediatric doctors there at the hospital, that these masks are gonna make our kids sicker. And I am in the middle of this trial, so I am the data. I am the science. I am working with the scientists. I'm working with the doctors right now. So that's my, my first statement here. Second, I sell masks for a living. When this came out, I sell free masks. I sold to hospitals, Johns Hopkins, and so forth. As a sales representative, we were told by the mask companies, the only masks that will actually help people are N95s. So if we're not sending our kids to school with N95, then they don't need masks. Because this doesn't work, okay? Okay, unless you're gonna supply our children with top-grade, $7 apiece masks, this crap doesn't work, okay? My son ended up with an MRI for headaches and nausea and was perfectly fine. This is gonna kill our children, not COVID.
Is this not COVID? I'm gonna ask that, I'm gonna ask questions, so hold on. Oh, sorry, Rachel in PC now, Tulaco, Cedar Hills parent. I actually have questions outside of the mask, so if you can answer my questions, that's really the reason why I'm here today. At the last meeting and also at the June meeting, Mr. Brown stated that we would be, have the plan shared with us on what the school year would look like for our children. I'm here today because I wanted to hear that. I haven't heard it yet. So I'm, I'm trying to understand, we're 23 days away from the start of school, what their day will look like. Will they be going to the gym? Will they be going to art? Will they be eating in the cafeteria? These are things I am here for today. I wanted to know these things, and they haven't been shared with me. So I'm asking, maybe Dr. Robertard, you can share the plan with us, the community?
The plan is posted on the district website. That plan does not go into the logistics of the day-to-day operations of each individual school. A lot of that detail will be provided by the individual building principals. I can tell you, yes, the school day does involve physical education class outside to the extent that it's possible. Students will have lunch. At the middle of high school, they'll be eating in various areas of the building. At the elementary level, they'll be eating in their classroom.
Will they be going to art? Will they be going to media? Will they be going to music?
The, just as we did last year at the elementary level, the special teachers will be visiting the classroom for the...
Okay, so here becomes my challenge with that. Because our children were on Zoom so often last year, I had the privilege to see what the specials looked like. And I have to tell you, besides music and Spanish, which I thought were excellent, I think that the others were lacking. In media, our children watched videos. Michelle Obama would read a video, a book, to our children in their classroom. Not the media teacher, somebody on YouTube, okay? Art on a cart was not exactly what we had hoped it to be. They came in with very little supplies. We had to provide a sketchbook for our children. And basically what they did was draw or watercolor on their sketchbook, and that was the extent of it. Gym, if you want to call it that. They went outside and they walked around or ran around the cars in the parking lot, okay? Or they did Rochambeau, or however you want to say it, pretty much every day in gym class. And then for the field day slash not field day, that we didn't want to call it, that's what they did again, making it not special. My concern is that we were promised a regular school day with what we usually had for school. Okay, but I'm asking questions. I'm not speaking, I'm asking questions. Okay, so we can't get any of our questions answered. If you have specific questions, I would be drawn to the building first of all.
What's the plan?
But you're the superintendent, and I'm asking about the plan. And I'm telling you that these parents will share that the specials being in the classroom and our children not leaving the classroom for the caf... to go to the caf... Excuse me, cafeteria to eat, to, to go for a special. They're gonna be in this room for eight hours except to go out for a math break. That's, that's, that's our plan? That's what we're doing this year?
We are following the guidance that's provided outside of the New Jersey Department of Education, strongly, you know, set scores that students should be maintained or secretly at the elementary level. And that is, that is what we are doing.
My next question.
Make it very, very quick.
Well, my next question is, what is the plan for Cedar Hills? We all know there's a lot of damage, okay? More so than I think we're being shared with because that's what we're hearing. We want to know, because in-person instruction is required at the start of the school year, if we cannot have our children go into the building safely, what is Plan B? Where are they going? What are they doing?
Right, and I did, a couple of parents have reached out to me about that. We, it's been a week since that took place. And we are, we've been working very hard. A tremendous amount has already been accomplished. We have a few meetings scheduled this week to step forward what we can expect from a timeframe. I'm expecting to be able to meet with parents on Friday in terms of where we are for the start.
So we don't, we won't get an answer today either?
No, you'll get it because there's still a lot of things that are in progress and we need to nail down in the real timeline. It's not fair to, to work that issue today until we have all the information. We should have that by Friday.
And are we gonna consider, hopefully, changing the parameters of how our children spend their day? We've had a whole year. We know what COVID looks like. We know what in-person instruction should look like. Like, when we started talking about this last year, you said that we, our hope is that we will get them into the gyms and we will get them into the art rooms and we'll get them into the mirrors. But now we're keeping them locked in a room. I just, it's just...
We are following the instructions, the guidelines, the plan that we think is...
But yet in Montville Township, our, our children go to...
That's why I'm gonna have to ask you, please step out.
Okay, in Montville Township, when they went to camp, they all were in the same room together. Okay.
Nicole Ward, 20-year-old in Montville. My children go to Wayne Mason. I'm a third grader and am coming to kindergarten. So to echo Rachel's sentiments, we are frustrated with the lack of overall transparency and information that you are giving us, okay? We don't know what school's gonna look like for our children in three weeks. You weren't at home with our children every virtual Wednesday and every day at 12:45 when they got off the bus. And you didn't see them, and you didn't listen to how boring school was. My daughter loved school. And after last year, she really doesn't love it anymore. And she had the best teacher in the school. I'm going completely off script here because I'm just, I'm so upset with the lack of emphasis on overall health. All the emphasis is being put on physical health. But as you all well know, health is at least three-dimensional. Either your physical health, your mental health, and your chemical health. And all of these things are connected. You cannot address one of them without affecting the others. So this mask that we're, we have on our face for our physical safety and our physical health is so detrimental to our children's mental well-being.
30 seconds, please.
Certain children feel claustrophobic in masks. My son, who's going into kindergarten, has mild sensory issues. He has not been able to keep a mask on his face for more than 30 minutes. What do you expect his teacher to do? Can anybody on the board answer that question for me? A five-year-old for six-plus hours a day, out in the bus to and back, to and from school, seven hours a day. What, what are they gonna do with him? Is that fair to our educators? Does anybody think that that's fair to our educators? Does anybody think it's fair to our children?
No.
I am responsible for every aspect of my child's overall well-being.
Thank you, miss. I'm gonna have to...
And I'm not saying I don't want masks. I'm saying I want the choice.
I want to remind you that the executive order makes that decision...
Other districts fighting more against the executive order. And you just say the executive order.
But no other districts have the ability to...
You don't care.
...keep masks off the streets.
Under, under the amendment...
If you miss, you're out of order. Please wait your, wait your opportunity to speak, please.
Trump, your stupid state crap.
Please wait for your opportunity. Where the next gentleman speaks? I mean, I just try this. How many here in the audience are still, want to speak? Okay, this is what I'm gonna propose. Everybody who would like to speak, please get in line right now. When that line ends, that's it. Get in the line now. We're not gonna tack on to the lines again. Everybody who wants to speak, get in the line now.
How you doing? My name is Drew Patinger. I'm actually a young lady with a blue pocketbook and a black shirt. The last one online. My name is Drew Patinger. I'm a teacher at MTHS. Been there for about seven or eight years. I also do bad leg at Woodmont, and I've done ESY over the summer for the last three years. In a lot of ways, I see your kids way more than I see my own. I have three young ones at home. So I, I understand a lot of the frustrations. I understand both sides. I see it as an educator and I see it as a parent, but there's no answers. You know, again, like the last lady that spoke before me, it should be a choice, whether I send my kid or a parent in... Montville sends their kid to school with or without a mask. That should be left up to the parent, whatever they feel most comfortable with. Governor Murphy, when he instituted the new mask mandate, is so concerned about COVID that the next day he hopped on an airplane and flew over to Italy to see if he don't fit. Right, he flew Delta. So he's not that concerned, okay? Then we get our advice from Dr. Fauci, and I'm trying to figure out for my own kids as well. So I'm not only talking about people here in, in Montville, but my own kids. I need answers. Are we following the first time he spoke and said masks do nothing? That the second you take these off the wrong way, the second I adjust it, the second I put it down, it's contaminated? I'm doing more harm to my kid's body and my own body than COVID ever will, okay? Are we doing the second one where we're supposed to double mask? Why aren't we double masking when we come back to school now, okay? Last week on a podcast, Fauci was asked a question about masking kids again. And his response, "I hope masks will be a temporary thing and temporarily enough that it doesn't have any long-lasting negative impact on them." That's not acceptable. It's not acceptable for my kids, and a lot of parents here probably share the same ways.
Please wrap up in the next 30 seconds.
Our President Biden, in the last town hall meeting, also said that if we get vaccinated, we can't get COVID. So I'm trying to figure out what's right, okay? Again, I'm not telling people they have to get vaccinated or not. I just want to know what we're doing because a lot of this doesn't make sense. Finally, my biggest point is that many educators, at least the ones I, I can say that I work with, were very fearful of COVID at the start. As the year went on, people weren't as concerned. Maybe it was the vaccination, social distancing, whatever. But what is the plan for mask breaks, particularly at MTHS? Whenever the, if we're one Montville and we're all in this together, the teachers, staff and admin at MTHS and all the buildings should only remove their masks when the students are allowed to. Because it's very easy for you guys to say, "Students need a mask up," or "I need a mask up." When we're inside the classroom, it's very difficult.
Scott, do you wrap up, please, sir?
Students ask us questions. We can't respond. They can't read our lips, right? If I get a 45-minute prep period, I can go into an empty classroom and take an additional 45-minute break. To me, that's not shared with the students at MTHS or the students in the baby room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jake Kavalsik. I live on Cameron Road.
I live on Camber Road. I don't envy any of you, but honestly, this is all pretty terrible, so I apologize. Mr. O'Brien, I don't know you, but then I'm sure you're...
But please don't address the board. Please address the chair.
Specifically towards Mr. O'Brien, I'll get my question.
Please don't address individual board members.
Okay, well, to the board that trying to limit, like, us as parents and are communicating with you and trying to limit that time and cancel the meeting, that's why there's a problem. That is the biggest reason why we are all here, because we don't feel heard. We don't feel that you're listening to us. That's an issue. That is the single biggest issue. Now, masks, no masks, it is what it is, okay? There isn't a whole lot we can do. But what we are asking of you is to stand up and represent us. And you're not. You just keep falling back on the fusion of responsibility with this executive order, and it's wrong. That's not what we want. We want a choice. We want you to, we want to feel like you're there for us, and you're just not. So to Kate's question earlier, she asked about an executive committee. Now, a few months ago, I asked Dr. Roetar over email, "Who is this executive committee when they're probably got masks?" Why not tell us who they are? Everybody's so concerned about safety and making sure that everybody's protected. What about us? We're standing up here defending our kids, trying to be heard. We're out in the open. Why not tell the people? Why not have a committee? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so before I start, I just want to ask the board...
Excuse me, your name, please, and address of origin.
Okay. Just come back to your little... So I wrote a five-minute speech. I know it's like your mom was gonna be pregnant. But I'm asking, I have a very unique perspective on this, so I'm asking a little bit of flexibility in two minutes. I'm sure if you were to ask the folks that are waiting, say what you have, you need to allow me a little bit extra time to give you my perspective, because like I said, I don't think it's ever been heard before. And it's a very unique commitment, so just kind of...
Okay. Good evening, fellow parents, board education members, Dr. Roetar and other school officials. Thank you for your consideration and taking the time to listen to the helpless comments. My name is Kristen Vetri, and I'm here to discuss a few important concerns directly to you this evening. I would like to start off by saying I'm a proud Montville resident, and not only did I choose to raise my daughter in this town, but I was also fortunate enough to grow up here as well. I'm a product of a Montville town to public schools, and I look fondly back on my childhood experience and absolutely love this town. I know there are many alumni like myself who have chosen to return to Montville to raise our families here. One of the biggest factors in all of us returning to Montville was how amazing our school district is and how we wanted our children to receive the same excellent education experiences that we had growing up. I would also like to take a moment to give you a few things about me so you can further understand who I am as a mother, as a citizen, and as a person. I have an eight-year-old daughter who has an extremely rare neurological disease called Sturridge-Weaver syndrome. She was diagnosed at three and a half months old, and my entire life since she was born has been dedicated to keeping her safe, healthy, and seizure-free. That is because children with Sturridge-Weaver syndrome are prone to seizures due to the anginomas on their brain. Part of keeping her safe during the pandemic was to get vaccinated, in which I did, along with every member of my family. My daughter was virtual for school the entire last year because, as we all know, COVID affects everyone differently. All that I do now as her primary caretaker is that if my daughter gets sick and has a fever, it will trigger a seizure, and we're not talking about thirty seconds. We are talking about seizures that last up to twenty minutes, and she could have cluster seizures. So, and they will happen over and over again. When my daughter has a seizure, she also has a very high likelihood of having a stroke of death, yet another unique aspect to her disease. Again, I'm happy to give you more information because it's a very complicated disease, but my time is limited. Another important part to understand is that we wear masks, my whole family. When the world reopen, we will wear a mask. So in that, I know that, you know, a lot of people here don't wear masks, and that's fine, because that's their choice, but my family, we do wear a mask. We also have consistently avoided large groups. We don't go out to restaurants. We are still proceeding extremely cautious.
I'm glad that I see you try to wrap this up in the next thirty seconds or so.
That's not gonna happen. I'm asking, so like, I have to explain to you, I have not spoken yet?
She can have my time. I'll sit.
No, she can have mine. You stop.
However, this is where I'm getting to. And I felt that was important to understand when I said. However, I do not feel that the entire world needs to change to protect my daughter. We have been living our lives over the last eight years, making very specific choices to keep her healthy. We don't go out during flu season. We take temperatures much more frequently than others, and late fall is our best friend. They are just a few accommodations that we make in order to be up to date. Would I love for parents to be responsible and keep their children home from school when they are sick? Absolutely. Will that ever happen? Absolutely not. No way. Even though the world has opened up, we still have not gone anywhere. And that is an example of how someone cruelly had a high risk title she hates. I do not need for my friends to be unable to breathe to make myself or my daughter feel better or safer for that matter. Above all else, I do not need her fellow classmates and students in her school to be forced to wear masks eight hours a day. There is no reason the entire world needs to change their lifestyle and behavior, especially one that is so harmful to children, just to give myself a false sense of safety. Even when we're out and about and we're wearing our masks, we're always basically in danger, if you will. But again, these are decisions that I get to make because I am her mother. They are decisions that I alone should be able to determine for how they'll be. The shameful part here is that both the board and Dr. Roetar have had ample time to come up with a viable solution to help children like my daughter. You have had months at this point to make a situation in which all children and their parents have the rights to struggle.
Miss, I'm glad that's your evidence, please.
To ignore...
Miss, please.
Okay, oh, that's crazy, man. I have not had a chance to speak for months. I listened to every single one of your board meetings for over a year, and I'm asking for a few extra minutes because I'm extremely sensitive to situations and need the background. And you guys are not even gonna give it to me? That is insane.
I'm not, please, not, miss. Look, I'm not trying to make you, no, I'm not trying to... I want you...
She does not answer my...
I would like to give everybody a chance to speak. I said, if you could do it this way, rather than telling, you say, "We're gonna have three more speakers," then cut it off.
No!
No, you stay till we're done!
Everybody a chance.
How inappropriate is that?
Vetri, I think we have your background, and I think if you could just either state your comment or question...
Well, I can't just say my hat. Okay, I'll jump right ahead.
Stop interrupting our letter. She would have been done by now.
Sorry. The shameful part here is that you all had a chance to make viable solutions. There could be various solutions to accommodate our district's medically fragile children and allow the majority of children to return in the district and regain their sense of normalcy and simple childhood. You did not acknowledge parental input, including the surveys. You have not, you could have asked for a focus group of diverse parents to come up with creative ways so that everyone could be happy. But you did nothing but sit back and let a politician make every single decision for you, not to mention a politician who's running for office in a few short months and who does not have any type of medical degree. Crisis, crisis, call for leadership and for those leaders to rise above the rest and take control and do what's best for the greater good. You all have failed miserably to this call. And now you ask, "Why wouldn't I be rejoicing at the fact that every person needs to be masked in school?" Here's where my daughter's disease is not straightforward or unobvial. My daughter overpeaks unbelievably fast due to her disease and due to the medications she takes. A two-minute mask break is not going to help her whatsoever. So now, I've asked Dr. Roetar, who was just a little parent, specific guidelines on whether or not the children will be required to wear a mask in indoor gyms and recess, both indoor and outdoor. I did not receive the direct response.
I did respond to your email.
You did. You gave me a vague statement. You did not say yes or no to recess and yes or no to...
Maybe you did not interpret, but yes, the answer to that is it's an exemption in the execution of...
It's an aerobic activity. So recess is considered an aerobic activity. Okay, you did not put that in your... You just gave me a statement and you did not, but that's another here that... So basically, there's absolutely no, so, let me just move on forward. Sorry about that. I'm trying to skip because obviously I don't have time. By mandating, ah, forget it. This is silly. This is absolutely silly. So, talk about the psychological impact when my daughter, her masks were reinstated at school. My daughter, Cleveland, asked me if she was going to die because she knows she has high risk to COVID. And you know what she sees when she sees a whole Montville district with masks on? That's their perception. That's her perception. She has high anxiety and she thinks she's going to die. So please, consider the psychological impact on what you're doing with these children by covering their secret. So, last, but not least, there are apparently medical exceptions for children wearing masks. Well, that's great, right? That's awesome. Great theory. But can you all guarantee that my daughter will not be bullied for being one in a small minority who cannot tolerate masks? Can you guarantee me that my daughter will not be asked uncomfortable questions and pointed out specifically because she is not wearing a mask? As long as my daughter and my daughter are about to see, I do not walk longer walking through school with a sandwich board announcing that she has Sturridge-Weaver syndrome. And by implementing and standing by this ridiculous policy, you are doing just that. She will no longer be the funny girl in class with a big smile or the friend who is always there to comfort another student when they are sick. She will be known as the girl who doesn't have to wear a mask because she has the disease that no one can pronounce or remember the namesake. You are setting an eight-year-old girl up for total humiliation and embarrassment. And no child wants to be singled out and looked at as being different, and that is exactly what you are doing. Instead of being able to trust the other closely members in place to prevent COVID, you are blindly standing by a policy that further alienates children who are ready for these details of difference than the neurotypical children.
Miss, you've been talking for roughly ten minutes now.
...is a direct violation of American citizenship.
Well, that's a tough act to follow. Mark Mansour, thirteen, Hollister Road, Toaco. And just a quick comment before, I kind of cut down what I was gonna say on time limit and stuff. Thank you for having us. Just a quick comment about that American Association of Pediatrics. The day they made that announcement, Pfizer was on their website. The next day, Pfizer was off the website. So connect the dots right there. What I want to say, though, is what do HOPACOM, Stafford, Wall, Manasquan, Berkeley, the Township of Lincoln Park Town Council, West Milford Town Council, all have in common? They have fearless, strong leaders who stand up for the majority. And with about seventy-five to eighty percent of teachers, staff, students, all vote for no mask, excuse me, mask optional, because I don't want no mask, I want people who want it to be able to have it, voted for mask optional. That's the majority. Those leaders are fighting for their kids. That's what we want you to do. We want you just to send a letter to the governor that we talked about in June.
We did. We sent the letter.
Send the letter out, like, that was a BS letter. You know it.
No, if you want to answer, the board officially says that the board is asking the governor to consider making masks optional at the local level in consultation with the local Department of Health. We are on record as having requested that from the governor.
All right, I'll review it. If I'm wrong, I...
Please, please, I'm...
I'm not trying to misrepresent it. I'm talking about, what we've been talking about in the meetings, things of that nature. I don't remember it exactly like that. I will go back and review it, and if I'm wrong, I'll send you an email and apologize. I will take your word for it. Thank you.
It's what it says.
Okay.
Don't ask, demand.
Exactly. But anyway, let me get back on track. Thank you for correcting me if I'm wrong. It takes brave people to step up and make change, and that's what we want you to do right now, just like these other districts are doing. Just, you know, send a letter to the governor. Tell him it's gonna do so much beneficial. We gotta hug the people. How many people did you have two years ago at this time at the meetings? Nobody. Nobody comes. We went to the Board of Health meeting last week, a few of us, and we were three people there, and they were thanking us for coming just to kind of get more...
Mark, you have thirty seconds.
Jesus Christ. All right. Basically, we have an opportunity to do what is right right now in June. Actually, you know what? The heck with that. What I want to say is, last Tuesday, I was on a Zoom with the NEA, NGA as a member. They were teaching teachers how to convince and talk to children and parents about getting a vaccine. And I hope that does not get here in this district because that's completely inappropriate. I hope you guys stop that and do not allow that to happen.
You have evidence to back it up.
There's incentives, $250 gift cards that are given out to enough teachers who talk to enough parents, talk to enough students. Everybody in this room is in a national database right now that is on that app. So reach. I have the Zoom, I have screenshots, I have all of that. Completely inappropriate, and I hope this district does not allow the teachers to pursue that avenue because that would be really disappointing. I know you guys care about the kids inside. I know we have our disagreements. I know it sounds, you know, like confrontational right now. It's not trying to. I care deeply about my kids. Come on, man. I sound like Joe Biden, sorry. Oh, they're gonna... Completely unintentional, sorry. Should bring politics. I apologize. But I, there's nothing else I can wrap up in a few seconds, but I hope the district does not allow that to happen in the schools. Thank you very much.
The paragraph from the letter that the board issued sent to the governor in June...
I don't want to hear it.
Allowing districts to make...
I don't want to hear it.
Based on current conditions and in consultation with the local Board of Health would be a better approach at this point in time. We feel that a local decision needs to be provided now that the virus is substantially under control in New Jersey and the mask mandate has been lifted in virtually all other aspects of our daily life. So the board is on record...
I already gave you at that time, control.
Anyone have tampons?
I see a person with a smart card. Let's see, how many?
So are you saying that you're not...
Five people behind that face. There should be six people. Six people left. Go out to your...
Okay. Me and some of my friends here are being called...
Do you identify yourself as a...
Comrade, eighteen, Willard Lane, Toaco, New Jersey, zero seven zero eight two. Fifty-three years old, had COVID, currently being treated with IV every frigging day. Me and some of my friends here are being called domestic terrorists simply because we don't want to wear a mask or get a frigging vaccine. Is this America? I'm wearing this face covering as a mockery of the entire mask thing. This face covering does nothing. This one to here does nothing. This one in my pocket, Rolex to wear, does nothing, all right? Why are we making this mandatory? Why? I could not, now switch gears, I cannot and should not and will not get the vaccine, nor will my son. It's against our science, the science and our religion. Me and my son both had COVID, and we both have antibodies. Unfortunately, it seems you guys are going to be robots and listen to all the guidelines. But when you go to sleep at night, I want you to stop and think about the entire thing from fifty thousand foot view and try to see how bad it is for little kids. Picture a little kid wearing masks in a frigging baby car. It's ridiculous.
I'm on the floor, answer to Hollister Road. So in March of 2020, we were asked to give the world fourteen days to slow the spread. At that point, nobody knew anything. Doctors and scientists needed time to plant data, study the virus, needed time to give us medical supplies for doctors and hospitals. Everyone was ready to do their part to help by staying home. Now we are here, five months into this. These families have sacrificed greatly. Incomes have been sacrificed, livelihoods, our joys and passions, hobbies, and most importantly, our children, our children's mental health and happiness. We were told that it was for the greater good to think of our neighbors, put them first. And all the while, our children are suffering and need a tariff for saying no more. We have been coming to these meetings and speaking out against our children and our families and yet keep turning a blind eye to the children you are supposedly here to represent. Scientific data and facts are continually ignored for your own prejudices and beliefs. We have so many educated people, so many different facets, so many here presenting data telling you about our personal testimonies. And we are continually told there is nothing that can be done. But in June's live, there was something that had been done. It was pushed off. We have people who came to our representatives to go to a board of health meeting last month. We questioned the breakdown that said that individuals, whether they were asymptomatic, false positives, or hospitalized. The state, the state didn't provide that data. There are major differences in affected asymptomatic and those hospitalized that affected decisions being made. And will they compel us to break down the data? Shouldn't that be known information? If you're making policy for all students based on this data, that's something that should be known. These children were together all summer in camps, playdates, sports, ESI. They weren't wearing masks.
30 seconds, please.
For a few individuals who are there, as it's their choice, and we will hire people to have that choice. But the majority of these children and their families were together and unmasked. And now these lame kids are going to be in school all day together masked. How does that make any sense? In the beginning, we didn't know much and we have little information. And now clearly, we know so much. We know children are not super spreaders of this virus. Masking children is a safety, is just foolish. And masking children with the guise of protecting teachers is immoral. Our children are at risk if we are giving them the biggest burden throughout this. At this point, most of the teachers in this district have been vaccinated and if not, they clearly have been offered the chance to get vaccinated. At this point, it's for choices to have, because they feel comfortable with that, their choice, that's what matters.
I think your time is over, please. Thank you. This has to be a plug for the speaker. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kate Hopper. I'm from Central Road in Montville. I've wanted to pass since the executive order replaced and students, ages 12, have to wear masks. But for these second orders, this wasn't placed last year. Is this going to be enforced among the students and if so, how? Because last year, especially at the high school, there were a number of students who were not wearing masks or were wearing so improperly and there was not enforcement by the staff. We will be discussing this at our administrative council meeting next week in Council of C, of course, and at the local building level. It is an expectation. It is a protocol violation if students don't.
So what's the outcome of the march?
What happens?
Please, you're out of words.
John Fazio, seven on the drive, number. So I'm glad you touched on that because I was going to ask a similar question about what happens if a parent's daughter refuses to wear masks in school. This is what the district here will be offering the Senator to say Lincoln Park, assuming that as soon as they can do so, for the park will probably allow masks to be optional, same thing, just to touch on what Mark had to say real quick. You know, you had Stafford, Goretz, Wall, Manasquan, Central Regional, Carnegie, Berkeley, HOPACOM, all Goretz. Either send or resend the letter. Then just say we sent one month ago, send within the past week or so, right? And then the town council resolutions, it just happened within the past week or so from West Milford and Lincoln Park, asking the governor directly to make this option. So if that's what we're looking for, I think above all else, support us, send the letter in to the governor and resend it, right, without updating facts. That's one thing we're looking for. The other item to touch on is it would be very helpful for the next meeting if masks are going to be mandatory. Are you published under what executive order, whether it's OSHA, CEO? What, what exact language and what rules or regulations apply to meetings and will confuse people that are confused? Why would you put masks here? Is it because we're in my school? Because you're Goretz?
It's because you're in school building. It's because you're in school building.
It's a public building.
Well, then maybe we would ask if you move it to a non-school building. I'm sure plenty of people here would agree with me on that.
Tampons. Ten tampons.
And last, lastly here, actually, I think I had, come on, I, one. The, the last plan that was put in place, the return to school plan? The community, it said in that plan that you solicited feedback from the community. You basically didn't. You don't want a kid around. You don't need to answer me on that, but we all know you didn't. So for this superintendent, you know, I hear that this is going to be, the community is going to have an input session. I really hope you take it seriously and bring the community in prior to making a decision and not as a formality after the fact. And lastly, if there's, you know, a lot of us here, we know a lot of facts about what's going on with the masks, latest, you know, everyone reading CDC. We have Nick Soper, you know, biostatistician on Speakile, that helps us interpret a lot of these studies. If anyone has studies that they believe are really setting the heart in the direction of, I need masks to keep me safe. Perfect. I need, John. Thank you. And I, and I need, you know, a vaccine to keep me safe. Or I need the mask to keep me safe. Whatever it is in this, going on in the world today, if you have certain, two or three studies that you believe are setting your direction, what else? You approach me. Approach Nick, approach, you know, a few other people here, you know who we are, right? We'll sit down with you calmly. We'll talk about the studies. We'll pull in a biostatistician and some other experts that go through those facts with you, right? Maybe you're right, maybe you're not. So that's what I ask you to do. Thank you. Dr. Pete Walsh, Toaco, three quick questions, two minutes. Number one, if and when the governor gets rid of the executive order, I'd like to know what the plan is in terms of following the next steps. So I went to the Board of Health meeting last week and they were not happy about the fact that the board head took their recommendations and then made their own all year last year. So I would like to know if and when the executive order is lifted, will you follow the Montville Board of Ed, I'm sorry, Board of Health recommendations? Or rely on the nurses and the school physician again and ignoring the Board of Health recommendations? Number one. Number two, I'd like to know what the quarantine situation is. If my child has to quarantine, will you have two weeks of worksheets? Or are we going to put the teachers through this back and forth, some kids on a laptop, most of them in a classroom? Mostly ignoring the kids in the classroom because of obviously the web issues that Montville has. As we all saw last year. And number three, quick question about Medlec. I don't know what the plan is for Medlec for aftercare. Is there going to be one supervisor for one classroom? Or are we going to intermingle the kids, which then goes against these cohorts that we keep hearing about? So I'd like to know what the plan is for Medlec laid out specifically when my child goes for the eighth, ninth, maybe 10th hour of school in a mask? If they don't need to be mixed in with all these different kids from different classrooms, which then kind of defeats the point of everything else we're doing.
With regard to quarantine, that information was shared with parents and a memo last week on the 12th that I could send out to the school community. They, if a student is required to quarantine by the school or the Department of Health, they will be able to attend school virtually during their period of quarantine. So that was shared with parents. That should not be a surprise to any.
It's not a surprise, but the question obviously is why would we do that in terms of putting those teachers back through the chaos and the stress?
There really isn't any other option. We don't have any other staff that could instruct our students that need to quarantine. Quite frankly, it probably does for them to connect to their classroom teacher to be on track with what's going on in the process. So that's the way that would work. In terms of Medlec, one of the reasons that our capacity for Medlec has been diminished this year is because we will be maintaining students in cohorts in the aftermath of COVID.
By class?
She asked by class?
Uh, I think it's by grade level.
But, but then why can't they go to the art room? Why?
I'm just, you asked a question. That's the answer. I'm not getting into the data about that.
No answers.
Okay. The Department of Television, their guidelines are ready.
Excuse, Dr. Walsh has a floor. You can't have people from the audience asking questions.
We worked very closely with the Department of Health last year. I know we have a new interim director, but.
Sounds, he's fantastic.
Yeah, I, we're even on my team, so I would imagine that that would continue with regard to, you know, as I said, our, our stated position was that if, if we do find ourselves in a situation where the mask, if the executive order is lifted, we will certainly be in contact with them to collaborate in terms of the decision with regard to making that optional.
So there's no guarantee that we would follow the Board of Health recommendations? You would just take it under advisement again, right?
We, I think what's expected is that there be a dialogue and, you know, a meeting of the minds as far as the, still. I, I don't, I wouldn't foresee any problems, but I can't believe how that might play out.
I also just one last thing, just wanted to say, I was kind of disappointed that I didn't see any of the members of Goretz at the Board of Health meeting last week. What version of actually getting us through this? When we asked them their, you know, how they think this is going to end, they had very good feedback. And they actually had a conversation which was very nice. And I recommend that all of you go to the next Board of Health meeting as representatives of Goretz and our community to actually have a dialogue with the Board of Health.
Hello, Tony Merkel, Toaco. A couple of parents already brought up a couple of main items. To extend on the quarantine issue, will the whole classroom be in quarantine?
We were typically quarantining only in the close contacts. I can't imagine that there would be like any situations where an entire class would have to be quarantined.
Weren't they contact based?
The contact race is usually within a six feet radius. You know, if we had a student who was identified as a child with Medicaid, it's not the whole class that gets quarantined. It's only the students in that class who are in close contacts of that student.
Only those students that are within six feet.
Okay, that's pretty much to our front.
All right, so back to enforcement, I have a question around that. So essentially, what you are doing, instead of actually being able to enforce this, you're just making, you're enabling the principals to be focused, right? And is this correct?
Okay, you have a comment to make. You can make a comment, but I'm not going to engage in debate.
So you can see a lot of parents are very frustrated, right? You've seen that. Yes?
Yep.
We agree. So part of it is that there's no real plan going into the law. Right? So you can see that all the parents are very upset. What's going to happen mentally, all this stuff, cafeteria? What's going to happen with cafeteria? How will they eat?
We've already stayed seated tonight. At the elementary level, students are having lunch in their classroom. But the high school, she's not out there.
So.
Except for Medlec.
When will they be allowed outside? Will they be allowed outside for recess?
That depends. After the exam.
So I guess the last, last part of my, my, my item is that thank you guys all for doing that.
Sir, please do not make comments in individual forums.
Who's in everyone's discussion?
No.
Not if you care.
Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 no. Let me say, yeah, how can I say? Let me say.
I feel bad for the parents. I see they're frustrated, but they really shouldn't. They should see that you don't care.
I think we do see.
Clear as day.
Sir, I spent 40 years in this building and 50 years in education. I care more about children than you.
Yeah!
You can have questions on you. My, my order is changed. Don't listen.
Recall O'Brien.
Don't, don't run against him. I just want to say one thing about that, sir. Please understand, nobody on this board has ever taken one cent for the duty. We do this for no reason other than the fact that America, the children, and the community. We may have different opinions than you do as to having to get to the same goal, but we have the same goal.
Name one goal.
Go ahead.
To hire a good superintendent.
Someone better.
Christine Samson, Toaco. I just have a simple question. Based on the madness when we first came in here about we're going to call the police if we don't wear masks. The police came. I think everybody that came in without a mask is still not wearing a mask. Are these the same threats you're going to make to our kids when they come to school without a mask?
Yeah.
It's a simple question. You have a whole team in to answer. We will not enforce the mask.
You will not enforce any.
You can't.
How? I'm asking how we can enforce masks.
The principals.
We send our children to school without masks. How will we physically enforce?
Our children.
They suspended on that last year.
And we will be called if we have this coming.
And if we don't, and if we don't, what is the handle? And what are you going to do? What is the handle?
They're going to be transported to the police department the same way the police escorted me out of here earlier.
Okay, again, if you have a comment to make, please make it.
I don't have a comment. I have a question.
This is not about questions and answers.
No, it's not Q and A. It's a chance for you to have a call.
No respect.
No, you do not get in line. Just line up.
Well, you just said that I have the opportunity to speak.
No, it's a chance of you to speak.
Christine Thel did write a memo to have right here tonight?
She did. I was hearing about it.
Did she email it to the superintendent?
Email to the, Dr. Volbitar? Do you have an email from Christine? Do you want to check your email? Maybe you do. I think she wanted it to be right here tonight.
You can check your emails.
No. This is public comments. It's a board member. Do you have any vote?
We can't, we can't hear what the board member has to say since she's not going to say it herself.
She can say when she's here.
Oh, come on.
Wow.
You kidding me?
That is so upsetting.
Time for a charter school. Turn on the mic.
Kelly DiTrillo, Main Road, Toaco. I initially wasn't going to get up here to speak today until Mark brought up something that I feel needs to be said for parents that do not know that we're not on the call. I'm going to read the following that was from the NEA Zoom call a few nights ago. Tips for vaccine combos for educators and school staff. As an educator or school staff member, you are a trusted messenger for many students. Use these tips to guide your conversations with them and help them stay safe and healthy. If a student approaches you with vaccine questions, empathize and relate to them on shared experiences, i.e. the difficulty of remote school. And let them know that as their teacher, you want to help them and their classmates get back to normal and back to being kids again. You can learn more about how to be empathetic, effective conversations about the vaccines here at, sent you to an other link. Make sure that they know that they are eligible as long as they are 12 or older and that vaccines are free, regardless of health insurance status, immigration status, et cetera. Encourage them to talk to their parents and/or doctors if they have a supportive network. If not, make sure that they're aware of vaccine-related resources, including maketosave.org/learn for answering vaccine questions, including questions about the Delta variant. They can also text their zip code and it gives a number. If they have concerns about missing school and/or falling behind on schoolwork due to side effects, be flexible and work with them to create a plan for them to turn in work late and/or do makeup assignments if needed. Encourage them to talk to their teachers or speak with them yourself. Remind them that in the long term, missing out on a day or two while being protected is much better than getting COVID-19 and missing two weeks. They can also get vaccinated on Friday or Saturday to give themselves the best possible chance of recovering from any potential side effects before the next full week.
We dropped this up. Can I have 30 seconds?
No, you're going to let me finish reading this.
30 seconds.
You're going to let me finish reading this. If their parents' guardians are too busy to take them to their vaccine appointment, work with them to come up with potential solutions to bring to their families, i.e. if local grocery stores or pharmacies are offering vaccines. Maybe they can go the next time they go grocery shopping or pick up prescriptions. Encourage them to come up with options based on the family's schedule and bring those suggestions home. If they do not want to wear masks anymore and/or don't understand why they're necessary, empathize. Say that you understand that masks are annoying, but they're necessary to keep everyone safe and make sure that we can stay in school in person. Especially if they are in a school with kids under 12. Remind them that not everyone can get the vaccine and that we're working together to keep everyone safe. If your students have concerns about the Delta variant, these breakthrough cases, et cetera, emphasize with their concerns, but let them know that the vaccines are largely protected against all strains, even Delta, and that being vaccinated is the best protection they can have. Over 97% of hospitalization and 99% of death. Over 97% of hospitalization and 99% of deaths are in on vaccinated people.
Miss your time, sir.
No, I'm sorry. I'm going to let you finish. Because everybody else will do the best. Is not a bad thing, but for the most part, they can safely do many activities. Sorry. That, being many activities, if they are vaccinated outdoors or vaccinated and masked indoors, if they have younger siblings or other loved ones who are otherwise unable to get vaccinated or high risk, their concerns are valid. They should be taking precautions whenever possible, but being vaccinated is still the best possible protection you can give them. You can find more information here next. No staff member in this district is a doctor or a parent and has no right to ever be speaking to children about being vaccinated. Persuading them, coercing them, getting them to go home to their parents and say, why am I not getting vaccinated? That is not... I'm making it known now, if my children come home and say that a staff member had these discussions, you're going to hear from my lawyer.
I am online and I'm standing here. You can join the meeting and I will stand here and I will still talk. If you thought I was pissed off before I came in, I am furious now. Each one of you, excuse me, Michael O'Brien, I am speaking to you. I am speaking to you. I am telling you right now, you cannot place any power over my civil liberties and my freedom to speak. And I am here of the House of Representatives, okay? Number one, number one, who, who is above the law here? Are you, Dr. Casey Turner, you above the law? Because each one of you is complicit in acting against the law. Each one of you is complicit in acting against the United States Constitution. Each one of you is implicit against the Sunshine Act, against PDMA guidelines, against the laws about HIPAA and the guidelines of our rights. I am telling you, I am imploring you, and I am begging you, as parents, as human beings, and as people that are responsible for the life of my children and their children, to stand the fuck up. Hey, if you do, you will be accountable for your actions of complicity, eh, fucking men.